Love it.
You're not thinking of Brad Park anymore?
I have 5:30.
That's good, see, that's not Brad. Brad went home, I just stopped him two minutes ago.
Back for his knee is hurting.
I'm nervous, I'm already going to say every one of them, so. I'm an accountant.
Ladies and gentlemen, Rick Johnson.
He's mentally.
That's an hour and an hour.
I don't know if she's called in yet.
Yeah, she's called in. Larry, Larry Gunn.
By the time he did something.
Why do we see it? Seven? He said now or no.
She must put the media down for 15 minutes.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Atumwa City Council meeting. If everybody would rise, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Hull?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Okay, our next item is our consent agenda, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve with moving item B5 to recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
The next item is to approve our agenda for tonight's city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of be item B5.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think we already voted on that.
I think we did that.
You just did that.
I thought we already did that.
Mark removed it.
But then you have to approve a consent agenda with the removed item.
Okay, all right. Well, we're still learning. Yes, you can take her role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Now, do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Our next agenda item is the city administrative report to council and citizens. I'll turn it over to Phil.
Okay, so we've got a couple of things here just before we bring up Alex from Anderson Larkin. First thing is in regards to that removal of the B5, I just wanted to make a quick statement here. So if there's one thing my parents instilled in me, it was if you make a mistake, own up to it. And I owe the city council and the public an apology regarding the agenda tonight. In my haste to put together a staff summary and agenda for that for that item for tonight's meeting, I did not properly review and edit the content of the agenda item. To compound that, when reviewing the agenda for tonight's meeting, I did not pay close enough attention to the placement of the item in the consent agenda. Ultimately, the agenda is my responsibility. I should have noticed this and moved it to department recommendation section as was just done and where I intended to be in the first place. I will get into more detail regarding the particulars of the agenda item when we get to that point, but I would like to clarify that the intent was not to create an entirely new position, but to assign some minor responsibilities should I be out of the city related to vacation, continuing education, et cetera. There's no compensation associated with that assignment. In hindsight, I should have treated them as two distinct actions, and I will address the issue fully when we get to that later in the agenda. At this time, I'd simply like to apologize once again for the imprecise word choice and the impression of lack of transparency related to that agenda item. I would also like to thank city council for correcting that oversight and giving the issue due consideration later tonight. Second thing, real briefly, is it was brought to my attention that we have a guest here tonight, Megan Logan from Wapow County Children's Alliance. She's on the executive board, and she wanted to speak a couple of minutes about one of our staff members that is going to be honored next week. So if I could have Megan Logan come up, please.
Good evening. So Lieutenant Bell, who is in the room, this is really awkward because I have to say this in front of you, but anyway, was nominated for award through Prevent Child Abuse Iowa. I and Karen Lauer nominated him in two separate votes for this, and I just wanted to review that award with you and my nomination in particular. So the award was a community hero award, and you are to speak about how that person creates safe spaces for children. So Lieutenant Bell creates spaces where children thrive in many capacities. He is a police officer who has served with the Atumwa Police Department for 26 years. There, there he has held many different roles during his employment. He spent many years on the drug task force, ensuring those who sold or transported illegal substances were reprimanded, as well as protecting all community members of Atumwa from these substances. In this, in his current role as Lieutenant of Investigations, he ensures in cases that involve crimes of children is investigated to its fullest extent in hopes a child is not further traumatized. Lieutenant Bell serves on the Wapow County Children's Alliance and currently is the vice chair. In this role, he advocates for the needs of children in our community, helps with events that are sponsored or held by the alliance, and has great knowledge on human trafficking. He has presented to professionals and the community at large on human trafficking. In these presentations, he discusses how the cases have been handled at the local level and federal level, as well as what professionals and community members can do to if human trafficking is suspected in our community. In closing, Lieutenant Bell is a tremendous asset to Atumwa and Wapow County, and he exemplifies what it means to be a community hero and the passion he brings to children and families in our area. That end.
And Lieutenant Bell will be getting the community hero award next Wednesday at the Prevent Child Abuse Iowa conference.
All right.
Thank you, Megan.
Tell Chief Farrington if he was here, he might have gotten that award. Thank you, Megan. And now I'd like to call up Alex Barr from Anderson Larkin to present on the fiscal year 2022 audit report.
Thanks for having me. My name's Alex Barr. I'm a partner at Anderson Larkin here in town, and I'm going to review the annual audit with with all you all, and I think you all have a paper copy if you want to flip through it as I, it's also going to be on the screen, so I'll have about 10 pages we're going to look at here. So if you want to turn to page one. So page one, at the top, it says independent auditors' report. That's what you pay us to provide an opinion on the financial statements, and in the independent auditors' report, second paragraph is our opinion on the financial statements. So I'll read that for you. "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities, aggregate discreetly presented component unit, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information of the city of Atumwa, Iowa as of June 30, 2022, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable its cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." So that's what we call an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on the financial statements. That's the best opinion we can give to a city on an audit report. And then two paragraphs down, there's a paragraph called emphasis of a matter. And so during the year ended June of 22, we implemented Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement 87 leases. And so that was a new accounting standard that required operating leases with a term of greater than 12 months to be on the balance sheet. And so there's, there's a payable and receivable for operating leases greater than 12 months now recorded on the balance sheet. So that's a new paragraph for this year. We can go to page five. So page five, at the top, it says statement of net position at year end. This is the balance sheet as of June of 22 and 21. So it's the assets, liabilities, and net position or equity of the city for both years. I'm going to focus on the total government column in the middle under June of 22. Total assets as of June of 22 were $232,242,000. That's a $7.5 million increase from the previous year. Farther down in the middle, total liabilities as of June of 22 were $69,901,000. That's an $11.8 million decrease from the previous year. Then near the bottom, total net position as of June of 22 was $138.3 million. That's a $6.8 million increase from the previous fiscal year. So revenues exceeded expenses during fiscal year 22 by $6.8 million. We can go to page six. So page six is the changes in net position, so otherwise known as the income statement. So it's the revenues and expenses for the same two fiscal periods. Total revenues as of June of 22 were $45,580,000. That's a $700,000 decrease from June of 21. Farther down, total expenses as of June of 22 were $38.8 million. That's a $5 million decrease from June of 21. So the overall increase in net position during fiscal year 22 was an increase of $6.8 million. Now we can turn all the way to page 26. So page 26 through 67 is the notes to the financial statements. Typically, we don't review the notes at board meetings, but I'd encourage the readers to read the notes because they provide additional information about the financial statements. And so that's pages 26 through 67. So we can now go to pages 68 and 69. So pages 68 and 69 is a two-page report, if you have it laid out in front of you. This is the budget to actual comparison, so we compare budgeted revenues and expenses versus actual revenues and expenses. And if there's any expenses on a line item that exceed the budget, we're required to report those. So on page 69, we have four line items that exceeded the budget for the year. Public safety, culture and recreation, community and economic development, and business-type activities. So that was a roughly 3.5% variance to the, to the budget and total, the total excess. Now we can go to page 137. So pages 137 through the end of the report is the schedule of findings and question costs. So any audit comments or findings that we have regarding the audit are included on pages 137 through the end of the report. I'll read the first four or five items under part one. Unmodified opinions were issued on the financial statements prepared in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. No material weaknesses in internal control over financial reporting were disclosed by the audit of the financial statements. Letter C, the audit did not disclose any noncompliance which is material to the financial statements. Letter D, no material weaknesses in internal control over the major program were noted. And letter E, an unmodified opinion was issued on compliance with requirements applicable to the major federal program. And so under letter G, the major federal program we audited this year was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Now we can go to page 138, the next page. So at the top of page 138, I talked about the budget being exceeded in four categories. So we have the comment at the top of page 138 about that. It's a required comment, even if you go over by a dollar, so. So that's included with a recommendation just to amend the budget before the budget's exceeded. And finally, on page 139. There's two comments on page 139. There's a 4-k-22 financial condition. There's four funds that had deficit balances as of the end of the year, so we're required to report those to you. I think it's common to have a few deficit balances each year, and so this isn't a new comment. And then the last comment, the annual financial report. Typically, the annual financial reports due December 1st. If it's not submitted by December 1st, we're required to have a comment that it wasn't submitted. And so in this case, we have a recommendation that the future annual financial reports be submitted by December 1st. So that's kind of a synopsis of the fiscal year 22 audit, but if there's any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer.
I have one or two, your honor.
Go ahead.
As a question that I ask every year, subs, as a matter of due diligence, are there any subsequent events, which I know that you have studied with this audit? Are there any subsequent events that you're aware of that the council should be concerned about or aware of at this time?
No, nothing, no events that I would put in that category.
Okay, and the second is directly related to what you just talked about, the timely filing of the annual financial report. From your perspective, is there anything that the city could have done differently to ensure that that would have been filed in a timely manner?
I think it was just part of the transition, really, from one, one group of workers to the next. I think, you know, maybe reports could have been generated sooner in some cases, but it was all part of the transition, I think, overall.
Okay, thank you.
Does council have any other questions? Okay, do you have anything else, Phil?
No, no.
Thanks for having me.
Yep, thank you for doing the audit.
Yep.
And I'd like to just thank Wassim and his finance staff for making sure that we had a good audit this past year. That takes a lot of hard work to get a clean audit, so thank you, Wassim and your staff for making sure that we're in good financial standing.
Oh, no, I don't have anything else under my report.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is where I ask if anybody would like to speak on any of the agenda items on our agenda tonight, and we do have three individuals who have already signed a paper that they want to speak when we get to those sections of the agenda. Is there anybody else besides the three individuals who have already turned in these slips that want to speak tonight? Okay, we'll have you come up when we get to those specific sections on the agenda.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on proposed ordinance number 3213 2023, amending the Code of Ordinances Municipal Code of the City of Atumwa, Iowa by changing the zoning classification of property known as 526 East Second from R4 to C2 in the city of Atumwa, Wapow County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe, Zach, you're going to present on this.
Yes, thank you, mayor, thank you, council. The applicant on this project is the Atumwa Community School District, which owns the property and has owned it for quite some time. They do seek to rezone the property, which is directly across from the high school, in order to complete an athletics complex. The parcel is currently used as a parking lot, and that parking lot use is actually a little bit inconsistent with the zoning as it is, so the rezoning would actually clear that up regardless of the development. The change of use would alleviate that existing nonconformance. Section 38966 of the code requires that we review several elements in consideration of a rezoning, and there's a few that I wanted to talk about early in the meeting. Included in your packet was a copy of the land use and zoning compatibility matrix, and then a proposed amendment to it. The code requires that if the rezoning is not consistent with the land use plan, then we should make an amendment to the land use plan, and the zoning board of adjustment did recommend an amendment that would be considered at a public hearing at the next meeting. The amendment would look at two elements of this plan, and relevant to this zoning, it would look at the public, semi-public, and institutional land use category. What I believe is an error is in the comprehensive plan. It only says that public, semi-public, and institutional land use is compatible with agriculture, rural, residential, and single-family, when obviously we have semi-public, public, and public, and institutional uses all throughout the community, and there are a lot of different situations where they might be at least partially compatible. For example, this building is in the C4 zone, the halfway house is in the I1 zone, their schools in R1, R2, R3, or maybe not R3, but R4 zones all throughout the community. And so our recommendation from the Plan and Zoning Commission is to change that so that all the zones have that use as at least partially compatible, with the exception of the rural mobile home park zone. So that'll be an amendment that's presented at the next meeting for adoption before the final reading of the ordinance. That would bring then this use compatible with the future land use plan. Also asked us to look at the conformance of goals and objectives in the comprehensive plan, and there were two we wanted to highlight. The first is quality of life. Goal B2 is to expand recreation activities for the entire community, including indoor and outdoor winter activities and after-school programs. As was discussed with the Plan and Zoning Commission, there will be opportunities for increasing recreation and also providing some of those after-school programs. Having the indoor space would allow for all sorts of winter sports as well, so we do see that as advancing that goal. Also in growth, goal 1A is to seek opportunities for expanding Atumwa's economic leadership role, and we see this facility as being in line with goals that we have in all of our other parks improvements around making Atumwa a destination for sports tourism. And we've all even had some conversations about the possibility of hosting some tournaments that we wouldn't be otherwise be able to host because we'll have the two basketball courts in that space as opposed to the one we have now. Other things in the packet, but there's really not too much complicated about this rezoning. The Plan and Zoning Commission did recommend last night unanimously to approve the rezoning. And then I did want to introduce Landon Allen from the school district, and I think the superintendent, Mike McGory, is also here, and they wanted to speak just a little bit about the project.
Hello, council, and thank you. Landon with the Atumwa Community School District, along with Superintendent McGory. Thought this would be a good opportunity with this rezoning to give the council an idea of what we're planning on this facility. We're really excited. The Atumwa is one of the only school districts that we're aware of in the state that currently does not house athletic varsity events at its high school. So we're really excited for this new athletic complex that will provide our students that benefit. Obviously, this will allow us to have gym classes over there as well. As Zach mentioned, certainly will bring more traffic to this area and into downtown. We're excited about that possibility. If you've ever been to bigger communities where you have large tournaments, folks need places to go while they're waiting for their team to play, so we're really excited for that potential and for all the benefits that it will provide for our students, not only during the school day, but all the extracurricular activities as well. This is two full-size basketball courts side by side with a connecting walkway over to the high school, and it features, when you walk in, kind of a looking down onto the court, where we've got three full-size basketball, or volleyball courts, and then obviously two full-size basketball courts, the ability to host larger wrestling tournaments in there as well, with like five to six wrestling mats in a single location. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does council have any questions?
Now, this complex is going to utilize the whole parking lot right now that you're currently using, right?
So if you look at the site plan in the packet there, there is going to be some parking retained for parking use, and then the building will take up, it looks like about two-thirds or so of the existing parking lot.
Thank you.
And you'll notice I did break into the superintendent's vehicle right before this meeting and stole his suit, and so.
I feel underdressed.
If that's the case, clearly, he's wearing too small a suit.
This is what people look like in the gym.
Mr. McGory, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I do. First, I think just how much we appreciate working with the city on this project and so many of our projects. It's just been wonderful relationship, and I think some of the questions if that might help this council if you if you get posed with these questions is, we're very conscious of the need for parking and making sure that we have enough parking and convenient parking. So the design of this structure will will provide a lot of parking very close to the facility, and one of the questions you might get is, is how does this compare to what we currently have at Evans? And it will be significantly more parking available at the high school for events than we will have at Evans. And so we're, we're excited that we'll be able to have closer parking for maybe elderly handicap that will be right by the structure, but also that we have a lot of more opportunities for people to be able to park around the high school. And I think that's a question that people sometimes don't, they want to know, and it's a fair question, so I just wanted to kind of clarify that, so.
I do have one question for you, since you mentioned parking a little bit. I'm assuming that you're going to wait to start this project until after the rest of the parking's finished up, because you're building a parking lot currently, right?
We've finished and opened that.
It is finished and opened.
Yeah, yeah, and opened, yeah. And just to give you an idea. We would not, you're exactly right. We, we wouldn't be probably starting this until that was finished. So that's been open for probably about a month and a half, two months. Our, our timeline for this would be probably putting it out for bid this summer, and actually potentially maybe starting late August with the project if we, if, you know, our bids come in where we want them to.
Does council have any questions for Mr. McGory? If not, I'd ask if there's anyone in the audience, since this is a public hearing, if you'd like to make any comments about this proposal. If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Ordinance number 3213 2023, amending the Code of Ordinances by changing the zoning classification of property known as 526 East Second from R4 to C2 in the city of Atumwa, Wapow County, Iowa. Recommendation passed the first consideration of ordinance number 3213 2023.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on proposed ordinance number 3214 2023, amending the Code of Ordinances Municipal Code of the City of Atumwa, Iowa by changing the zoning classification of property known as 1508 Albia Road from C1 to C2 in the city of Atumwa, Wapow County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Zach, I believe you're going to present on this one as well.
Yes, thank you, mayor. The applicant seeks to rezone the property at 1508 Albia Road from C1 to C2 in order to operate an impound lot in record service. The zoning change primarily will permit short-term vehicle storage as a permitted land use. Short-term vehicle storage allows for parking operating and nonoperating vehicles on hard surface parking for up to 30 days. Storage of body-damaged vehicles would require screening from public rights of way, and we have spoken with the building owner about using first the interior of the building, but he's also going to be constructing a complete fence around the property, which would have screening as well of those vehicles. The, again, the code requires us to look at a few elements, and there are a couple I want to draw attention to. Conformance with the future land use plan. A second element of the proposed amendment looks at the land use category for neighborhood mixed use. It also only, it does not identify C2 as compatible or partially compatible. The staff recommendation and the recommendation of the Plan and Zoning Commission, which Uh, the staff recommendation and the recommendation of the plan and zoning commission, which will be presented at the next meeting, is to amend that to allow uh C two as partially compatible with that land use. The primary reason for this uh is to address what I see as a pretty big incongruity in the plan. Uh, the entire Church Street uh and the entire uh Richmond Street are zoned C two, but the future land use plan identifies them as also suitable for neighborhood mixed use, which is incongruous. And we do see uh alternative development, which would be compatible with some C two uses in those zones. Uh, so we do recommend making that change, and so we'd recommend the ordinance along with that amendment at the next meeting. Um, and then uh we did look a little bit at patterned development and compatibility with the surrounding development. There is uh C two development in that area generally. The fairway is zoned C two. Uh, also, the former uses of this parcel have included some uses that are more in line with more intensive uh zoning district, the RV sales. There was a tire shop there. Um, and then looking at the trend of development, we didn't see a strong trend in either direction. The Fairway store in two thousand and seven uh has been suggesting higher intensity, while the Southern Iowa mental health use across the street is in a bit lower intensity from the bowling alley it was before. Um, but we didn't see anything in that uh that would dissuade the rezoning, and then the plan and zoning commission did recommend uh the rezoning unanimously at their meeting last night as well. Um, Josh Kirby from uh the applicant also wanted to speak briefly on this one.
Counsel? My name's Josh Kirby with Kirby Record Service. Um, I propose the rezoning of this property to uh put this in for C two to accommodate our needs. Um, we searched long and hard for a place to set up and uh to bring our business to Atoma. And it's kind of take what you can get scenario, but that place offered us a great place to start out and work. And um it it's kind of in rough shape, but what we plan immediately is to fix it up and bring a nicer um for the community, for the residents that are connecting to our property, bring a nicer element to the street and and make it look a lot better than it does. Um, but like Zach said, mentioned that we plan on, there's fence there already, but we plan on redoing it, make it look better and meet our needs as well as the public's needs. Um, everything will be included to the behind the business where we plan to store cars. And as of now, we don't, we don't store cars longer than twenty days anyways. Um, and they're usually gone, and we have a place outside in the county that we take, remove the cars afterwards. Um, but we've done uh, we've done three years now in business in in Bloomfield, and majority of our work's here. Um, we've done over a hundred thousand dollars in sales here um since we opened up, and we missed a lot. Okay, good. We missed out on a lot of work because of the the run of the back and forth, and so we're gonna set up shop here as well, and we can accommodate the public's needs. They're very high here in Atoma and the surrounding areas, so um that is our purpose. We're trying to get this rezoned to meet our needs as well as the public's. So that being said, I'll answer any questions you have any.
I I do have a question. Um, so I heard you say you don't usually store vehicles longer than twenty days, and I know that we have thirty, well, on here it says thirty days, but I think you identified twenty days. So how do you monitor that? And then I heard you also say that um you take it them to the county, so or a place outside in the town into the county. So what does that process look like, and how do you monitor that?
Well, we monitor that through our, we have electronic system that we run and um by the state code that we do all the paperwork, so we send out the letters. Um, typically, when they come in the impound, immediately the next day, uh next business day. And then, once they're notified, they have ten days, and then they can extend that ten days. But after the twentieth day, we submit the paperwork to the uh police department or to the sheriff's department if they haven't redeemed their vehicle to get it signed over and up to us. But once that twenty-day mark hits, they're no longer allowed to redeem it, um unless they personally, you know, we've made exceptions that they're hitting hard times and we've worked with them. Um, but those are only extreme cases, but most people, they don't wanna pay storage, so they pick them up fast. So we keep that, we keep track of that, and then once that, once that times come up, we move them out. It's actually in Davis County. We'll move them out to where they're stored on another piece of property, my my property. And um, and then once we accumulate thirty or forty that's worth it, we have an auction sell them.
And that, oh, go ahead.
How many cars will be able to be on this lot?
That's a lot. The right now, the way it's set up, um, I've calculated that we could hold sixty to seventy cars. Um, I'm gonna do some restructuring of it, um, so it can eventually hold a hundred. Um, but typically, from what we see down there, um, is I know the traffic here is higher, but on on a week's average, maybe five to fifteen cars, and they could come in and then they rotate, like every twenty, thirty days, they'll rotate in and out, but hopefully we don't see no fifty, sixty cars at one time. But it can accommodate that very safely with plenty of room to function and as well as, you know, very tight-knit. If anything's leaking, we address it, we take care of it, we we get rid of the fluids, so it doesn't, there won't be no contamination to the property or the street or the city streets. We we take care of that problem right from, you know, wrecks. We take care of that right away, so there's no contamination.
Thank you.
So um again, I, so one of our biggest concerns and something we hear often is throughout the town is that we wanna clean up our town, you know? And um my concern is, and I think some of this was addressed by Zach, but I would like you to expand on it more. Um, we don't want just people to drive by on that road and just see a ton of old, broken-down cars. So I think that um Zach had mentioned some um items that you're putting in to um alleviate that, so you're not seeing that. What, can you expand upon that?
Yes, ma'am. Um, the fencing will have uh black skirting that does not allow you to see in or out. Um, it allows wind to travel through it, it's transparent, but nobody will be able to see just in case there is wrecked vehicles or there's piled vehicles up. They won't be able to see it from the street or from the side surrounding areas. Um, and biggest thing is we not just, it's not just for the impound uh part of it. We service, we're a big triple-A provider. We service um a lot of different insurance companies, so I mean, believe it or not, you wouldn't think, since we're so mobile, but we have a lot of people come into our place of business in Bloomfield all the time saying, hey, can you tow this for me? Can can I set up service for this? And so, and typically, I've got somebody down there, eight to five Monday through Friday, and we'll have the same here to accommodate them needs. And um so that part of the the business will be included, and it it won't be a nice sore um as it is down there. I've got it all fenced off, and you don't know it's a towing business unless you actually go back there. And the front, I'm the type of person, I like things to look good inside and out, and I want the front to be presentable, you know, not just another record service. I want it to be a place where people feel comfortable to come in and do business.
Then I have one final question, and Zach, this may be more geared toward you. Um, so when we do a rezoning, you send out letters, correct, to neighbors or make them aware?
So we do send a letter to uh every property owner within two hundred feet.
Okay, did we get any response from the property owner or owners regarding this um change?
No, we didn't receive any calls, and there was also nobody that came to speak at the public hearing last night.
Okay, thank you.
I have one quick question, and this is probably more geared towards you, Zach. The the fencing in which the gentleman's talking about, is that in conformance with um with what we have in code for uh fencing that would be uh considered decent for a commercial district? I'm concerned about that um since that is one of our premier business districts in town, and we do have a considerable amount of traffic that's going right across the street there to Fairway. So I wanna make sure that if we do allow this, I I understand that the vehicles will be behind said fence, but I wanna make sure that said fence actually looks decent, because we do have several um opportunities for improvement in this community as far as uh blocking of of views and and having fences that are not what we would consider up to par for the community. And the last thing we need in the community is is uh even if there is a fence up, it it would be a nice sore for those that are visiting.
Yeah, um, so there is a drawing of in the packet in red on the map that looks like this is where the fence will be on the lot, or at least is proposed. Um, the fence would have to be constructed under permit, uh, so there'd be some more review that would go into it before we build the fence. Uh, as it's described, the material seems to be compatible with the code, but we will get a little more detailed with the permit application for the fence. We'll probably wanna see uh a description of what exactly the material is, uh, something from the vendor with an image of the material or something like that. Uh, we'll just chase down to make sure that it is, but for as it sounds, it does seem like it uh conforms.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, elaborate.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, yeah, I've done my research on the um the fencing and all that, and the what's there now, um, I apply, it's up to code. Um, but the, when they put that fence in there, they didn't do anything with the back fence that joins the actual residential homes. And it's just a four-foot chain-link fence that's ran down, and that's actually the property owner's portion that their fence. I've I've gotten with the connecting property owners that own that fence and talked to them about it, and we've all came to the same conclusion that, and we're gonna do it at at our expense, but we're gonna erect on the back portion a six-foot uh privacy wood fence that way. And it also helps because there's a road that comes up um to the east side of the building, and when we were actually talking about it, it was in the evening, and the headlights just just pound their houses straight through my property. So that'll eliminate that, and that does conform to city code. Um, and I'm, and we will, depending on what they say, we have to put up what, you know, what type or we will do, but um all the property owners suggested that was a good idea to take down that crummy chain-link fence, and we'll put up a nice wood picket fence just for that back portion. There's already some on the east side, and then the rest will be chain-linked um at the at the ordinance of the city's specifications.
Yeah, I would like to share when Zach said earlier that that Fairway and and mental health versus the line of work you're in are are altogether two different things.
Yes, sir.
And we're trying to clean that area up, and even though I appreciate the fact that you'd be willing to put a fence to where they're still gonna know what it is, and they're still gonna hear the the noise, you know, a business like that, which you know you just can't find the land, is typically at the edge of town.
Yes, sir.
And and it's that way for a reason.
Yes.
So even though you can cycle them every twenty days, you're still picking up cars every day. If not, you're not making a living, you know? So I just don't think that i- it's the right location for what we're trying to do as a city. No offense to you and your business at all, you know?
All right, and if I can elaborate, um, I understand them concerns, and the directly to the south of our property, um, them same neighbors that I talked to about the fence, which I assured them um either way that if this went through, that um gave them my number directly and everything, but I've also told my employees that, look, you know, we are surrounded, you know, this portion is backs up to a neighborhood. So if we are coming in at night, um, that we're to get in and get out, shut our trucks off if we're not using them, um, not to be loud. The things can be, if it involves noise or it involves thirty minutes of moving cars to put this car resituate, and that can be done during the day, during day uh lot hours. The only thing at night would be to drop it off, and but most of the time, I've got enough employees, so if one gets loaded and it has to go to the 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 impound, it can be done in the morning, they can take it home with them. Uh, we have enough vi- enough trucks to accommodate. So we uh we did take in the um residents that surround the property. We did take in the concerns, cause we don't want, we don't wanna be a burden on anybody. Um, cause I have taken into thought what you just said, and there's, there's businesses, yes, there's not a lot of businesses that do what I do um on that street, but we are considerate, and because if we're not, you know, it's just the public won't like us and won't make no money. So, but the rule of thumb is we serve the public. We're, we're not in it for the dollar, we're in it for helping people. And so I made it a point to make sure they all know that we will, in fact, um, be as quiet as possible if we have to come in there in the AM hours, so, and let them know if they have any complaints, they can call me and I'll adjust accordingly.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Kirby?
I just have one more question, and and I I hope you don't take this the wrong way.
Yes, sir.
Um, with your business in Bloomfield, and I know we're comparing apples to oranges uh in this uh question, but have you noticed um any uh increase in criminal activity in relation to your business uh being where it's at? Do you anticipate that there might be any increase in any activity, break-in activity, et cetera, uh, with this business being located in the Atoma?
Yes, sir, I spoke on this a little last night. Um, down there, I had a problem initially before, like the first two days I I moved in. Um, and because the property down there didn't have a fence before I moved in and um didn't have anything to deter criminal activity. Um, in my line of work, I've, I haven't had anybody steal anybody's personal stuff. We're, we're real strict on things. We don't go in people's cars. We lock them up regardless if we have the keys or not, cause we can get back in them if we need, if the customer doesn't have the keys, it's not a problem. We lock them up, we store them, and I have video cameras, I have security cameras all over my property, motion sensors, which will be the same here. Um, and the problem I first had was somebody came in and stole Cadillac converters, but like I said, no fencing, none of that, no, no deterrent. I was barely there, I didn't have time yet. Um, so yes, I understand that as a concern, but like you said, if I get the fence to where they can't see, they don't know what's back there, they don't know what to steal. Um, out of sight, out of mind kind of thing. And I don't see it because, like I said, I invest in that, I invest in security cameras, I invest in people knowing motion lights, so they can, they know, you know? And hopefully cleaning the place up and reconstructing it and having, you know, people come in and out during the day, and, you know, at night too, they'll see, over time, they'll see people moving in and out at night. That'll probably deter the criminal activity away from that area, because I do know that from my research that that portion right where I'm at, there is a lot of traffic, or there has been over the years for criminal activity. Um, and I spoke with the neighbors behind us, and that was another thing with the fence. They don't have no front fence on their, on their property. So people have been actually coming through their yard, cutting through the side of their house and jumping that fence, um, because it's only this tall uh to get over, not necessarily in the my property, but to cut through, no telling what they're doing. Um, but that will eliminate that with the, with the taller fence and the motion lines, the security cameras, and if they do, I mean, you can't prevent it. You, you can try, and if it does, but at least with the cameras and everything else, you'll kind of know, you know, for the law enforcement, they'll know who did it, or they'll have some evidence to go after. Um, hopefully, cut down on, we don't have none of it, but who's to say? You know, we, but we'll do our best like we do down there to deter it. And once I got that set up down there, I haven't had a problem one in three years um with anything missing, any anybody's personal stuff that it's all been accounted for. I've never had anybody come to me saying there, you know, anything was taken out of their cars, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just have one quick question and kind of concern, uh, you'll have to clarify. You guys haul semis, don't you?
Yes, sir.
So you're not planning on storing semis in the property, right?
I have a, I have a uh in agreement with a gentleman outside of town to use that for the heavy and medium-duty stuff. Nothing over, nothing over ten thousand pounds will be coming. It's just not, it's not good for the roads, not good for the the property, and plus, it's just, then it becomes an eyesore, you can see that over a fence, so.
Yeah, that was my concern. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Kirby or Zach? Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Kirby or Zach? If not, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments they want to make about this request for zoning classification change? If not, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
Oh, yes, my bad.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Ordinance number 3214, 2023, amending the code of ordinances by changing the zoning classification of property known as 1508 Alvia Road from C1 to C2 in the city of Otomo, Wapalo County, Iowa. Recommendation passed the first consideration of ordinance number 3214, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
No.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Yep.
Bid report to reject bid received on the 2023 RFP number one, Bridgeview Hotel Overflow Parking Project. Recommendation reject bid received on RFP number one, Bridgeview Hotel Overflow Parking Project.
Larry, I believe you're going to present on this.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We sent out four proposals, or RFP one, for overflow parking, which included grading and graveling of the area east of the Jefferson Street Bridge to accommodate additional large events at the Bridgeview Center. The one proposal that we received is significantly over the original 40,000 budgeted out to CIP. Our plan would be to reject this, and then our crews have priced material hauled and placed, and we would do the grading work and compaction and placement.
Does Council have any questions for Larry?
Can you say that last piece again, that you kind of cut out, and so I didn't hear you completely?
We plan on using our labor, our crews, to do the grading work and placement of the material or the rock, and in the final grading and compaction.
Thank you.
I need a motion in a second.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Approved the salary adjustment along with assignment of assistant city administrator duties to the Director of Community Development effective May 7, 2023. Recommendation approve the salary adjustment along with assignment of assistant city administrator duties.
If the recommendation is presented.
Second.
Phil, are you going to present on this?
Yes, Honorable Mayor. So about 10 days ago, I was informed by Director of Community Development, Simonson, that he was a finalist for a vacancy administrative position in a neighboring community. Knowing there are a number of significant development projects in the pipeline, and the impact that departure could have upon the projects at this time, I assured him of his value to the community and staff. Also realized there was a fairly significant pay gap between the posted low end of the salary range for that position and his current salary. Director of Community Development position was one of the benchmark positions that was utilized in the Gallagher Study, and although we don't have the full report back yet, we did get to look to see the data for some of the benchmark positions. Through further discussion and negotiations, the proposed salary adjustment, which is before you tonight, is in line with the results of the study, and it was tentatively agreed to pending approval of City Council. The decision to present this recommendation was not an easy one. I understand the impact that it has across the city and with other staff. Compensation is a polarizing issue, and there have been numerous occasions over the past couple of years where recommended increases were denied or put on hold. In a perfect world, we'd have either had the completed study and made all necessary compensation adjustments previously, or we'd be able to delay the hiring process in this, until we had the results back from that report and adjust compensation across the board. Unfortunately, time is not one of the variables that is in our control, and so following a phone call from recruiters, they called me last Wednesday, confirming that Simonson was a finalist and was asking for references, led to a sleepless night wrestling with the decision on how to proceed. I felt I was duty bound to at least present this before Council and give you the option on how to proceed. Thursday morning, that next morning, so last Thursday, I came into the office to talk with Simonson, try to finalize any negotiated terms that if approved by you tonight would result in him removing his name from consideration in another process. And I hastily put staff summary together, attempting to capture these terms. In my haste, I failed to clarify that I was not looking to create a full-time position, and the compensation adjustment was related to the data from the study rather than the assignment of assistant city administrator. So just to clarify, they are distinct items, the compensation is related to data that we got from that study, and is in line with where the end result would be, and through all that discussion, this was the result of that. So understanding that if you were to proceed in the process, we offered the position and take it, we would be without that position, and having somebody to fill into that in the immediate term, I believe would put us in a stalemate with some of those projects and the development, the momentum that the city has had over the past 18 months to three years. And so therefore, I'm presenting this before you for consideration.
Does Council have any questions for Phil before the other people in the audience speak on this?
I got some comments on this, that the only reason Phil did this is because Zach had a chance to get another job. So that shouldn't justify, all of a sudden, we give him a $16,000 or $15,000 raise, and we do it May 7. So when the 4% increase comes in, he gets it on the pay raise. The city administrator don't need an assistant. We're understaffed all the way across the board, and we're undermanned all the way across the board. Last week, I went to three meetings, and everybody in them rooms knew, everybody's understaffed, and everybody's underpaid. And one thing we learned in the military, one person isn't any more important than the other person. If we don't have the funding, like the or the franchise fees is supposed to do, we don't be needing to do something like this. If we think the morale is bad now, wait and see if this passes. We talked, or you talked, all three meetings I went to, that we need to learn to trust one another, and we need to work as a team. This is not neither one of them at all. And there's a reason they don't trust the powers that be at the city. And I think it's time we take a stand and make the right decision. We don't have the money and the funds to do it, and it shouldn't have been justified. It was only trying to be justified after he was applying for another job. I applaud the man. He's trying to live the American dream, and I wish the best for him. We shouldn't hold him back. Statistics will show you, once, and no offense, Zach, I'm proud of you, and I hope the best for whatever you're looking for in the future, because he's chasing the dream. He shouldn't stay somewhere if it's time for him to move on. That's what he went to school for. That's what America's all about. But statistic will show you, if you give somebody a bump to try to keep them here, a very high percentage of the time, they leave anyway. That's all I got.
And just clarify real quick, this isn't adding another position to the city. This is in my absence. If I have a prolonged absence, I'm on vacation, there's time-sensitive materials that need to be signed off on, it's filling in in that role. If there is a decision needs to be made in an emergency where I'm not reachable because I'm on vacation or in continuing education, that's where it fills in. So it's a very temporary, variable-type position, developmental in nature, that is what's being presented or proposed, not 20 hours a week, or even five hours a week. This is something that is very temporary and only in rare circumstances.
So my question would be, what did you do the last two years when you wasn't here, when you was on vacation? The city still ran.
Yeah, and there were times when I responded to emails, phone calls, whatever else, and did not get time away 100%. And there were times over the last three years where I was asked, if I'm away from the office, who is going to be there to sign off on things or do whatever else? So this is a response to that.
I guess I have a question for Zach. Zach, currently, how many projects do you have going on?
I think it's a pretty hard thing to put a number on. We've got quite a few. Whether it's on the inspection side, we're doing some really big building projects. I think I spoke at the staff meeting last week. We've permitted about $62 million in building activity so far this year. Last year, in the entire year, we did only around 70. So we've got a lot going on on the building side. And then on development, we're running grant programs, we're doing quite a few other things in terms of putting together development projects, retail recruitment, all that sort of stuff.
Thank you. And that's a lot, for anybody to think that they can come into your shoes and step into that. Right now, currently, there is a lot of things going on in the city, and there's some great things going on here, so, yeah, thank you, Zach.
Does other Council have any questions for Phil before I ask the other two individuals to come up and speak?
I said questions, no, you want them to speak.
Okay, let's start with Dennis Will Hoyt.
Hi, I'm Dennis Will Hoyt, and thank you for recognizing me to speak. I'm at 334 East Fifth Street. And so many things have changed since I made my notes this afternoon, but one thing, just before I forget, I've made notes to make corrections, but one thing, if we don't have the depth of knowledge in our city staff that we can't afford for someone to take an advancement, then I question the management that is currently going on. If you all are relying on one person, and that person leaves, and you can't continue, then what does that say about the management of what's going on? And when you're gone, Phil, we have a mayor, we have a mayor who is extremely competent, and has, that position has taken over for city administrator for extended periods of time. So I think that that's an easy answer to, when you're gone, the mayor can take over. And I think, and he is an elected official. Again, I do thank you for recognizing me, and thank you for allowing me to get those few thoughts off my mind, and I do want to thank the three council members who responded to my email. I appreciate the response, it's nice to be heard. My advice to the other two council members who didn't take the time to respond to my email, I remind you that you're elected representatives, and listening is important, and it's important to take the time. You've committed to being representatives of the community, and you had plenty of time to respond to the email, and we all expect to be listened to, and it builds a better relationship with your constituents when we know that we're being listened to, even if we don't agree. This is a new position, regardless of what's being said, it's a new position, and I'll explain my relationship and why I feel so strongly to that, that there's no other way to describe it but a new position. And sadly, we're putting a person with it, and we shouldn't, because those are personnel issues, and I think we need to focus on the position and not the person. And I must say, I've heard the apology, but for something to be put on the consent agenda, which is typically, you know, licensing for bars, and, you know, alcohol licenses, other types of licenses, contracts with regular insurance providers, those kinds of things, to overlook and suggest that it was just a mistake, I think is less than honest, to be very frank. I also learned from my mother that there are people that go ahead and do what they want to, and then they ask for forgiveness later, and some people operate on that premise regularly. And it seems to those of us in the public that this is exactly what happened, and appearance matters. It matters. How that stood out on the consent agenda so egregiously, I'm not sure how anyone who is responsible for that could have overlooked it. This is a new position, it's a new title, it's new job responsibilities, and a new salary. Why do we need an assistant administrator now? If the current administrator feels that they need an assistant, then a request should be brought to the council, and your constituents should hear a discussion, and thank you for taking it out of the consent agenda so that we could have a discussion. It's difficult to comprehend why a city of 25,000 people needs an assistant administrator. We have a mayor, we have someone elected by officials for short-term absences, and we've seen it before, as I said, in a long-term absence, the mayor took control of those decisions, and was supported by the council at that time. And what are these new job responsibilities? We've not heard anything about them. Do the new responsibilities include supervision of former colleagues? Is this the second person in command? Because it's not, you're not just an assistant when your boss is there, you're an assistant all the time. So where does the, where does the power structure lie? And is it reasonable to assume that, as, you know, Mr. McIntyre, I didn't think we would ever agree on much, but I really, I, you were spot on, so thank you for that, that we're already short-staffed, and you're adding more responsibility to a department that is infamously overworked and over, you know, that they don't have enough shortage. And we've talked about enforcement of ordinances, and how we don't have enough people to enforce our ordinances, and so our city, as Ms. Galloway was saying, and Rowe, that is less than lovely in its appearances, because we don't enforce things. And we find out tonight that we have schools and parking lots that have been, and not from your doing, but for years have been in the wrong zone. We don't have enough staff, so can a person in that current position add anything more to their plate? I don't think so, and that also spells that it is a new position. Who does the assistant report to ultimately? Will it be the council that has oversight of the assistant in such a potentially powerful position? But given the way that this is being created and has been presented, it would appear that the current city administrator has the oversight. I think that's unwise. I think this is something that the council needs to have direct oversight on. Are you eager to give away your responsibility in who is the CEO of your city? It comes with a salary adjustment, of course. We didn't know until today, when it was in the paper, and I didn't know until someone pointed out. We didn't know what it was going to be. That wasn't part of the information that was presented to us, and we read it in the paper. It just said adjustment. That's not a really very fine point when it comes to talking about money. And what of those city staff members, as we've heard, that have been waiting for increase in their salaries? They have been told that, oh, we're waiting for the study. Oh, but now we just happen to have this one position report that we can talk about, this is what the salary should be, while ignoring all of the rest of the city staff? I think that that's unconscionable, and I can't believe that we've gotten to this point. And you are creating a new position, and I've had some experience with this. I've been in academia where job descriptions are written, and when positions and lines become open, if that changes, it has to seek approval up the chain and to the equal opportunity employment person, so that you know and you remain consistent with what you're expecting of that position. If it changes, that is a new position and needs approval. And I've also had experience in the corporate world, where in order to maintain an employee, they created a new position, but that employee had to apply. And the fact that you're not presenting this to the public for public applications is wrong, and it makes it, and it's a new position. And at the very least, it lacks transparency, and as I've heard from social gathering, the social gathering... And as I've heard from social gathering, the social gathering places in Atumwa, this is the sentiment. Typical city of Atumwa behavior. Once again, city leadership doing whatever it wants. And I think that that's, you know, you may not put a stock in that. It's anecdotal. You may say that those are just the naysayers. But you must realize that that's reality. That is the perception. And this does not help change that perception. It does not change the reputation of our city. You need to communicate these processes. This is a mistake that, as I said earlier, I believe it is very egregious, despite the very sincere apology. Thank you for not letting this slip through the consent agenda. And I hope you will reject this recommendation, counsel. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Gail Roberts.
All right, well, I was nervous about this, but after your speech, I applaud you. First of all, you changed it up on me. So therefore, I'm going to have to revise some of my stuff. But I want you to know, first of all, I was told not to come here because I would end up, in the long run, losing my job. And I was also told it wasn't going to do any good to say anything because you guys have already got your minds made up. And I'm here to try to change your mind, or at least to consider. He made a good point. We have a mayor. That has always been, in the past, is how it was done. This didn't come up. And Zach, this has nothing against you. We have people that can do this. Like he said, the mayor can. We have people that have been here longer than Zach and probably knows more. I'm not saying you don't know. I'm just pointing the fact that, you know, Larry Sills has been here longer than Zach has. Why wasn't he ever in that position? You know, even anybody, I'm talking about anybody that's been here longer than. But my, okay, so I'm going to go, Zach was in line for a job. He did not say he was getting a job. He was in line for a job. Okay, so I'm going to read what I've had before. Zach is in line, in line, which I'm hearing now. He was offered the job for city administrator for the city of Fairfield, so I'm told. Phil wants to make him, well, now, substitute. First off, I feel that if we need a substit-, okay, I'm just going to say what I had written down. If we need a part-time assistant, then our city administrator is not doing his job, we need to seek another administrator. Okay? I agree that Zach is a valuable asset. There's no question there. In fact, most of us are. I mean, one job is more important, just as important as another. You asked the question, what all does he have going on? He may be too busy to be substituting. You know, have you guys thought of that? Okay, so my opinion is that if somebody's in line and, you know, you guys shouldn't even be considering this until they get the job offer. How does anyone know whether he's gotten it or not, or if he's been offered it? When he's been offered it is then, is when you should be making, talking about it. No, you don't want to lose him. But to me, if you're, if somebody is going to leave the city, let him leave the city. You're not going to try and do something for me if I try to go get another job somewhere. I'm just a pedly, piddly landfill employee. I don't make that much money. I don't make, you know, so, and if he is, okay, trust me. I'm not for this. I'm not for it at all. But is the council going to start bargaining with management employees to keep them? Because I guarantee you, it's going to start happening. People's going to start coming to you and say, I've got this job offer. I'm in line for this job offer. If you do it for one person, you're going to have to do it for others. Okay? So, and personally, like I said, I don't think you'd ever do it for hourly employees, because we've already lost. We've already lost some good employees. And if someone is, like I said, if somebody's wanting to leave the city, so be it. If they're not happy with their pay or job, they will be seeking again. And then they'll be asking for more. I just feel like you guys really, really need to reconsider this. Okay? And yes, this has made a lot of people mad. It's made management mad. It's made non-union employees mad. And it's made union employees mad. The city says they are trying to be transparent and boost morale, but you're not. They are just shooting, you're just shooting yourself in your, they're just shooting themselves in the foot. It's definitely going to cause trust issues. How can you expect, I'm getting nervous. How can you, how can you expect to get the morale of employees up, especially when someone else is denied a raise, which they have been, and you are given an employee a raise to stay? If you are going to put an employee for a week, your paid salary, your paid damn good salary. I understand, yes, you want a vacation, but we have a mayor. We do. We have a mayor or anybody else. And have you ever heard of differential pay? Why give him a $15,000 raise a year for doing it for one week? So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Counsel, have any other comments they want to make before we vote?
I'll make a couple of comments. I want to, first of all, thank Dennis and Gail for speaking. I believe I communicated with both of you over the last couple of days. And I just want to point out a couple of things that each of you said that I really appreciate in your points tonight. Dennis, you had said that we really need to look at the position, not the person. And I think that that's absolutely critical, that that is the mantra going forward for this community. Because, you know, it might not, and I think this goes to what I had spoke with Gail about earlier today. This really, it does need to be taken out of context of this particular person, because it could be that particular person or that particular person or Gail herself. These are circumstances that we really need to look at as the individual, not as, or the position, not as the individual and the background circumstances to each of those. And looking at losing the job, I'm so sorry that you feel that, you feel that you would come here and make comments, and you feel like your position would be at risk. That's an utter shame that you should have to feel that way, aside from the fact that you're a city employee, you're a resident of this community, and you absolutely have the right to be coming here and voicing your opinion. So I guess from my perspective, I would say I hope you never feel that way. And for what it's worth, my apologies that you do feel that you might be at risk of your job for coming here and speaking, because that should never, that should never be the case. I do want to speak, and I said that, I believe I said it at least part and parcel to Dennis. And I know that I spoke to Gail to this today. And I've said it to a few other people that I've talked to over the past couple of days. Set the city, the whole title of city administrator aside, because I'm kind of looking at this from two completely different positions here. The action of city administrator is really kind of a separate issue to me. And the reason that I say it's a separate issue to me really revolves around the pay and the city's complete inability to pay people what they are worth. And the complete, at least to this juncture, knowing that we have paid for a comprehensive compensation study, the complete inability to have that delivered. That's a little bit of an issue to me at this point. And I think we addressed this at least once in the past for past council meetings. But that being said, we have put ourselves in a position as a city in the past. And again, I'm trying to separate this particular issue with what has transpired in this city in years and decades past. And I understand fully everybody's, I'm very, very cognizant of everybody's concerns about this. But what I would offer is a unique look into, somebody that's not, oh, sorry, that's not related to this position or this department, but I would look at the Public Works Department as the prime example for this. We have a department where we have completely failed to offer competitive salaries to its employees. We have a department where there's an engineer that has not been filled for, what, two years now? Is that right? A little over two years, because we have refused, as a city, to offer a competitive salary.
And I think we pulled the listing too, didn't we, recently? Pulled the listing for, isn't that what you said earlier too?
No, I said we've tried to fill it multiple times, and it's, I'd say, on hold. We haven't, we haven't kept trying to fill it recently.
So I guess my point to that is, and looking back in time, we had a very unique struggle in trying to fill our finance director position because we had a salary level that was not competitive with the open market. So again, setting Mr. Simonsen aside for just a second, and we'll get back to that. The city of Atumwa has shot itself in the foot many, many times over the last several decades in the fact that we do not, and we draw a line, a very hard line in the sand, and say, if you don't want to work here for the wages that we're offering, go somewhere else. We don't care. And guess what? In Public Works, they all went somewhere else, because we couldn't hire, we couldn't, we couldn't offer a competitive wage. Now, it doesn't take a genius to see what the end result of that is. Larry's department's completely short-staffed. Public Works, you know, we hear all the time, the roads are crap. We're not getting anything done on the streets department. They don't respond in Public Works. Well, there's a reason for that, because they're so short-staffed, they can't get anything done. And why is that? Because we don't hire with a competitive wage. At some point, as a city, we have to, and I understand, this is not a private corporation. I get that. But at some point, we have to acknowledge the fact that our city is not competitive in wages, and we have to rectify that. Am I saying that now is the correct time? Am I saying now that Zach is the correct person? No, I'm not saying that. But I am saying that we have to start somewhere. And when I'm looking at, and again, I can't stress this enough, I am making a separation between the city administrator and the issue of pay that's at hand. At some point, we have to say, we are not, as a city, going to continue to allow our talented individuals to just walk away, because we're not going to, we're just going to let all of our talent go. Don't hold them back. Just let them walk away. At some point, that nonsense has to stop. At some point, we have to say, we value our employees, and we are going to do what it takes to keep our talented employees. And from a financial perspective, I'm going to challenge the city council on this. One of the two priorities that we have as a city council is fiduciary oversight, making sure that we're making decisions that are best for the taxpayers of the city of Atumwa. And when we're faced with a decision, I don't care whether it's compensation or whether it's roadwork or whether it's buying paper for the office staff, at some point, we have to say, we pay this, or we pay twice this, and then we suffer the consequences as a result of it. At the end, that's even going to further compound the financial ramifications of our decision. At some point, the decision really becomes obvious instead of just saying, nah, we're just going to let them walk away. So, you know, again, I just want to be clear on my position on this. We have to start protecting our employees in this city. We cannot just keep drawing a line in the sand and saying that we're not, we're not going to take the position that we're going to listen to our employees and we're going to not take everything as a case-by-case basis. And I have heard plenty of stories over the past 24, 48 hours of, well, this person left because he didn't do this. This person left because he didn't do this. I'm here to tell you, I've been sitting on this city council for seven and a half years, and I have not heard a single one of those employees come forward and say anything. And I would say the same thing now, as I would have said six years ago, five years ago, four years ago. If there's a real threat of losing a qualified employee, and they're coming forward and saying, you know, hey, work with me. I want to be an employee of the city of Atumwa. I want to be, I want to be here. Then let's talk. Let's figure out how we can, that we can make this work.
Does anybody have any other comments they want to make?
So I, I mean, I would echo a lot of what councilperson Rowe says, that what's in the packet in the recommendation, I think we need to break out, which I'll talk about in a minute. But I do want to talk about, and I know this isn't about the Gallagher study, but it is about the Gallagher study, because it has been put, it has put on hold a lot of advancements for our hourly employees, like Gail said, for our other director positions too, just for our employees in general. And I know that I asked Barb to come in and present, our Director of Human Resources to come and present, was it, two meetings ago or whatever? And I, I'm going to just say this again. We need to light a fire and get this study done. We cannot continue to sit up here and say, oh, we're waiting for this study. The study was, we were supposed to have numbers far months ago. There was a problem. I'm still a little on the fence on exactly understanding that problem. And I'm at the point where this, we need the information, because we can no longer use that as an excuse, because it's no longer an excuse. Now it's just aggravating a frustration and a problem. So that's all I have to say about that. I would, I guess I would say, I mean, the 18th, I'd like another update. And I'm going to continue to ask for updates at every meeting until we have the results. So if you just want to make that a permanent thing on the council agenda. And then the last thing too, I guess, as councilperson Rowe identified too, I think that this is two different issues in the way it, this, I'm looking for the, as the recommendation was presented, I think it's different things. And I guess I would ask for amended recommendation, because I do think that everything councilperson Rowe said is very valuable. We need to keep our employees, we have good employees, and we do need to keep them. We may still have an accountant had we started to practice a lot of what we're doing tonight. We had a great accountant, for example, sitting, looking at her right now. And we may still have had that accountant, should we have practiced what councilperson Rowe is speaking about. There's a form right there. And then, can I? I lost my train of thought. Anyways, but I think I would like to amend the recommendation, because I do think Zach is talented, and I would like to see him keep with the city. But I also think that Dennis had a point too, that when there are titles or positions adjusted, or titles or duties, there should be an administrator row, or row, oh my gosh, I'm sorry, administratorath. I did speak with you about this too, that that should be a process where we do have an application process. So I would like to amend it. And please, if I say this wrong, please help me. But I would like to amend it to approve the salary adjustment and take out that assignment of assistant city administrator duties.
And Zach, we value you. I just want to let you know that.
I just want to let you know that. And I do think the wording and how things were presented has kind of like put a bad taste in some people mouths. So with that being said, I value you, Zach.
You want to go ahead and let her speak and then I'll make my comments?
Tina?
Hi, I'm Tina Jaegers. I'm the former accountant here. I live at 550 Bryan Road where I've resided since 1999. I would still be here today. It didn't have anything to do with my salary. I was perfectly happy, content in my position. The HR director and I had some issues. I was not heard. I've asked every one of you councilpeople to get involved in it as well. And when I told him I had another job, he said, have a good life. That's all I got from him. It was not, how can I retain you? What can I do? I even offered to come in nights and weekends so that that position was still being taken care of. And I was told, see ya, have a good life. So if there is a problem in this city, it starts with administration. So it isn't so much about my pay. And do I think everybody in this city deserves more money? Absolutely. But if you continue to allow the negligence and what's going on in your finance right now happen? When's the last time a bank reconciliation was done? Before I left? I want to know if you can even tell us how many outstanding checks are in your bank account right now? I was finding fraud checks before I left. Several of them a month. Is that being taken care of? Does anyone even know? I'm sorry, but this city is in a world of hurt and it's gonna only get worse unless you open your eyes and do something about it. And that's, that's why I left.
Thank you, Tina. Does council have any other comments they want to make?
Yeah. So I'll say my piece on it. As has already been stated, this should really be two separate items, two separate agenda items, the pay wage and the Assistant City Administrator. Dennis, you're right, we should go through an application process that should be posted. I think Zach's very qualified for this position, but there are other people in the city that are qualified for this if we're gonna do this. As far as the, the salary goes, I've railed since I've gotten on council about compensation for our city staff. The, the compensation study was supposed to be done three, four months ago, hasn't been done. We have no updates, real updates. And like Councilman Rowe said, you know, we've let people leave positions. We had to go to an outside organization to find our finance director. We, you know, we don't have an engineer for two years. We haven't had a, an accountant since Tina left her position. You know, these are all valuable positions, you know, how long, if we, if we say no to this salary adjustment for, for, for the Community Development Director position, not for, for Zach, but just for the Community Development Director position, how long's it gonna be before we get a new Community Development Director? Six months, nine months? Could be a year before we get another one? If we, if we don't have one in that position, who's gonna do that job? I, I can't do that job. I don't think we're gonna put it on the rest of his staff to do it. So if he leaves that position, just about everything that he's working on comes to a halt for a while till we get somebody else in that position, somebody that can do that job on a daily basis. And then you gotta get them up to speed to do that job. So I don't look at this as just investing in a position. I look at this as investing in our community. We have to invest in making sure that our economic development doesn't fall through. Yes, we have an economic development organization that helps out, but this is investing in not just our staff, but also our community. And I think that gets overlooked a lot. But I'm also going to push that, you know, this study should be done and, and back to us. We need to know where we're at with salaries. We need to know what compensation is, is needed for these employees. And, you know, it, it's just, it's been too long. We, we need it back now. So we need to push for that. We need to know what's going on with it and get it back here. Zach, I do appreciate you. You know, I've told you this in the past. And Gail, we, we do appreciate you too. We appreciate our gatekeepers. Don't, don't think for one minute that, you know, I, I don't appreciate everything you do out there. So don't ever feel, don't ever feel that, that coming here and speaking your mind or calling a council member and speaking your mind or calling a city administrator and speaking your mind is going to get you fired. And no city employee should feel that way. The city should have an open door policy. You should be able to walk in, speak your mind and walk away knowing that you're not gonna get fired or. I feel bad that I'm hearing from Tina that, that that was said to her. I hope that wasn't said to her. I, I have to take it at face value. I, I think, no, nobody should be treated like that. So if, if that's happened, I apologize. I hope we can make something right with that. So, yeah, so that's all I got to say about it.
Does anybody else have any comments? Cause I'd like to make a couple of comments, even though I know I don't get to vote on this.
Tony Miller, 1209 Brentwood. I wasn't gonna get up and speak tonight because I figured what's gonna happen is gonna happen. But we're in an unusual situation right now. For seven, for nine to 12 months, I've been talking to the city administration about, we got a position, the second guy in the Atumwa Fire Department is deputy chief position. For nine to 12 months, I'm saying, you need to make this right. He's number 10 or 11, or nine or 10 in the fire department with salary. You need to make this right. This is a great employee. I'm gone in four or five months, I'm gonna be gone. Now, I've talked for a long, long time about, a few years ago, the city was big on line of succession. Well, I had a line of succession for five years when I put my resignation in. And five years is gonna, or five months has come light. We had the perfect guy who's more resume, his resume is probably better than any fire marshal in the entire state of Iowa. And he would have been a perfect chief with one little exception. He put his resignation in yesterday. We will no longer have that. So and we're gonna be looking for a fire chief and we're also gonna be looking for deputy chief position. In 2010, we had three 40-hour positions. Now we have one. So we got an issue. I'm just letting you know. So whatever happens to this situation, you guys do what you want to do, but you can't pick and choose on how you're gonna give somebody this when you got an absolutely great person coming up. There would have been an absolutely fantastic fire chief. That's not gonna happen now. Because he's, he's, he put his resignation in and I know there's gonna be talk, it's like, well, yeah, but he was gonna go to another job. He originally was not. Up until just a few months ago, he was happy he was gonna be in this position, probably in this position, but then we don't have to worry about that now. So take a, I think the city needs to take a, a serious look. Your employees have been here for a long time. Take care of them. There are reasons they're in that position and they do a fantastic job for the city. Corey was known statewide. He goes up and teaches the hazmat, or the two, the two-week instructor's course at the fire school. This is a guy that we let go for what reason? So take a look at what you're thinking tonight and then think about, you can't pick and choose on how you're gonna take care of people's been with the city for a long time or people that's been with the city for a short time. Cause you all got great, great employees. Take advantage of that.
Dennis?
Thank you for one more comment. 334 East 5th Street, Dennis Willhoy. I don't understand how you aren't questioning why you're in this position because you don't have a, you have a person in place that's the only one that has the depth of knowledge and you're worried that, you know, it'll take six months to fill, a year to fill. You, you combine that position. You used to have someone that, he was an assistant to the administrator so that there was at least someone who knew what was going on and you've put yourself in this position and now you expect the public to just go along with this? That shouldn't guide your decision. Perhaps you should look at how you've structured things and you've put your, you've backed yourself into a corner and now you're paying for it and you're expecting us to pay for it. I would suggest that you must wait for this salary, this salary study and you must demand it as quickly as you can so that you can, just as Mr. Rowe said, put your house in order instead of, instead of, oh, here, we've got an emergency here, so we'll take care of it here, but we've got an emergency here and we hear crickets.
Just to address a couple of the comments that were made there quickly, please. Sure. Chief Miller is correct. We have been in conversation about wages. I never heard a number offered up and we were in the process of getting the study that has not been returned yet and that is an issue of itself. But there was in place to identify a number. I mean, it could have been that he would have said 50,000 and it comes back and the study says 20,000. I didn't have anything to go off of to have a number two pushback to say, okay, we'll increase it to whatever it is. That, that's not true?
I'm not gonna get into a big discussion about what was said, what wasn't said. All I know is when we talked about this nine to 12 months ago, when we first started talking about it, we know where they was with the, where the second position in the fire department, where they was at salary rise. They was number nine or 10. The number two person in a fire department should not be nine or 10 positions behind. You go to any fire station in the state of Iowa and you're not gonna have that situation. There's a reason you put people in a position because they do a great job and they do a fantastic job for the city. Now, should that make them nine or 10 in this, in that department? Probably not. That was what the discussion was and this went on for a long, long time.
Okay, you're talking about the internal structure then.
I have a point of clarification. You say nine or 10 in the salary structure. So let's say you would be number one potentially.
I was number one.
And then he is the ninth person, but he's second in charge.
Second in charge and he should have been, normally in any fire department, the number two in charge is, has a salary comparable to being number two in charge of the fire department. That, the year where I'm talking about, they went to the top 10 positions of the fire department, officers, assistant chiefs, captains, and the number two guy was nine or 10 on the list.
And that was including overtime, I believe?
That's including everything. It's, it's total pay.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you. And as far as Ms. Jaegers is concerned, I remember that conversation completely different and it was conversations over several meetings about your unhappiness with the city and not wanting to be in the position or in the public aspect of that position. So there was a lot more than, and I never heard a number that was offered as far as you were concerned either.
I was not unhappy as the accountant. I was unhappy when you got rid of my supervisor and put me in her position. I made that very clear to you that I didn't want that to continue. It took four months to interview somebody, to even get somebody in that position. And I kept hearing, we're gonna get on it, we're gonna get on it, we're gonna get on it, and you were gone and nothing ever happened for months, Phil. It has nothing to do with the position I was in. It didn't even have anything to do with my pay. When you tried to get me to take the position that was vacant, you told me it paid a lot more and I said, you could pay me four times that amount and I still would not take it because I didn't want it. I was perfectly happy as an accountant here.
And that part I remember, that you didn't want that position.
And the reason I left is because of all this stuff that occurred with the HR director. And you know that? I came to you. I still have the text messages on my phone where you said you could separate your friendship with her from your position, but you never did that. You always took her side. And when she told me I was setting a bad example because I pointed out that she wasn't correct in her work, that I was setting a bad example for the employees by arguing with her, she was not my supervisor, nor did she deserve to be treated like she was second in command. And as far as who's in charge when you're gone, if I'm mistaken, you correct me, that when I first got here, that person that signed when you weren't here was Kayla. It was the fiscal officer. The fiscal director is second in charge when the city administrator's gone. If it's a long-term, the mayor steps in. But that's the way it was when I got here. That's the way it was before I got here.
That is my understanding that has happened before. Also, the police chief has been in that position before.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments?
One more quick thing before, before Phil speaks. I appreciate us talking about management here, I really do. But I'm a type of person, I love everybody. Let's not forget the laborers in this town. I've been going to different department heads and talking to different employees and we haven't brought not one of them up tonight. But I'm telling you right now, I've talked to people that feel guilty going on vacation because their department is so understaffed that they're gonna screw their fellow people over. To me, them are employees we need to focus on too. So let's not just talk on one side.
I guess I, I guess I don't know the protocol. Am I supposed to say my name and address? Gal Roberts, nine friendly lane. I personally think, you know, you brought up the wage study, you're waiting, you're waiting on this wage study before you can do these raises. Okay? But you're saying with the wage study, he is under. Why are you giving him his, but nobody else? I mean, I just think that you need to wait until we do get the wage study back and then, like you said, somebody needs to apply for it instead of just putting the responsibility, given the responsibility to one person. I mean, that's my opinion.
So the, the, the difference here, and there was about, I want to say 12 or 14 different positions that were benchmark positions. This particular position is one of them that was one of those benchmark positions. So that information was back. The circumstances presented themselves as far as this offer and if we were to let him interview, potentially get the job and walk, then the question would be, what did we do? Another question here, what, what was done to try to keep him? Those processes in the end move very quickly. I don't believe we would have an opportunity to counter that. It's either he takes it or he doesn't at that point. And that, that's part of it. The other part, just to clarify, is when this was put together, yes, it was lumped together and the compensation, I think, was probably a little bit more than what is offered here. This position in that temporary role when I wasn't here was the icing on the cake, the, the piece that helped, brought it over the top maybe. So that was part of that rationale for that. It wasn't, like I said, adding a bunch of hours or other responsibility unless I was to be gone and the duties were fairly simple. It was signing any time-sensitive information, whether it was financial records, HR, general administrative stuff, and then basically training and any other developmental assignments. Wasn't anything that was to be adding or piling on to the workload that he already has. And it wasn't to take off a bunch of work from me that I didn't want to do. So I just wanted to clarify that.
So I just have one final comment. So when Zach was hired, he was actually hired 16% less than the acting person in his role. And we actually, and correct me if I'm wrong, when we hired Zach too, we combined roles. So we gave him more position, or more, we made that position, not Zach, but that position had more responsibilities, but then we cut the pay by 16%. And again, I get and I understand that when we have seasoned employees that they, you know, they have a higher rate. But again, we combined the role, cut the pay by 16%. Is that correct? Well, I know that 16% is correct, but is the other aspect correct?
Yes, we had not backfilled that position to speak to that in the current or the next budget. Hiring back a planner was one of the, the things that was voted on by council.
So then if we look at that, so when Zach left, the previous planner was making $92,914 and maybe some change. But if you take that times like a 4% raise over the last few years, it would probably, it would be actually over what, or right in line, or actually it would be right at about what we would be looking to. be right at about what we would be looking to maybe increase Zach's, what we're asked, being asked to increase Zach's salary to today. I think there was a question about where is this money coming from? Has this ever been in the budget? But just to kind of bring some perspective, that had this last person in the, well, not Zach's role, but in that role, which was a different role, would be making about what we are looking at bringing this position up to today. And again, we've combined two positions into this. And I'm not talking about the assistant city administrator. I'm talking about the two positions that were combined to make Zach's role, or Zach's position. Again, that position, should Zach be here or not?
Does anybody else have any comments to make before I make my couple of comments? Okay, I don't know how the vote's going to go on this tonight, but I just want to assure the city council that I am always more than willing to try and help provide backup service to Phil. And when he's been gone in the past, I have tried to make sure I'm around when he's gone. So I'm more than willing to continue to try and be a team player and do what I can to help when he's gone as mayor. So I want you to all know that I'm not opposed to doing that, number one. And number two, and this is not directed towards Zach either, but just philosophically, and I pretty much shared all this with Phil already, the timing of this is unfortunate, but I had an issue with it because we've had other department heads that have been told they're not going to get pay raises until this Gallagher study comes back. And maybe there is some preliminary information that's already gotten back now, but I don't think any of us have seen it. And just because Gallagher makes those recommendations, the city's still going to have to decide whether they're going to follow those recommendations or change them. We're not required to necessarily follow Gallagher's recommendations, although I think that's hopefully the intent when we're paying them a bunch of money to do the study. And I guess I want to put a little bit more positive spin on this, and I'm basing this on 40 years of being a CEO at an upper management. I always applaud people when they feel like they're ready for the next step, and I never want to see anybody get held back. And if Zach feels like he's ready to be a city administrator, and he's got the opportunity to go after that, I would applaud him if he gets it. I don't know how long Phil is going to be here. He might be here five, 10 years. Even when Phil leaves, there's no guarantee that Zach would become the next city administrator, and those jobs don't come open all that often. And it's a job that's close to home for Zach. I would hate to lose Zach because I think he's highly capable, but I don't think you should ever look at holding people back when they're trying to advance and better themselves in their career. And I think we need to also keep that in mind. And I kind of agree a little bit with some of the comments that were made earlier tonight. It always leaves a big hole when somebody leaves because they take a wealth of information and knowledge with them. But maybe the departments within the city of Atumwa need to do a better job of cross-training people within their departments so that when somebody does leave, you've got the capability within that department to at least hold things together till the next person gets brought on board. And I know that's more difficult to do when we've got some departments that have a fairly high vacancy rate right now. But maybe that's something that also needs to be looked at in the future, is having people be more cross-trained to fill in if a department head, for instance, decides to leave. I would hate to see Zach leave, but I think if he has the opportunity and he wants to be a city administrator, I think that's great. And I would like to think that the city of Atumwa maybe has something to do with helping him hone his skills to the point where he thinks he's ready to take that next step. If he doesn't get the city administrator job, then, you know, I definitely think when the Gallagher study comes back, there's going to probably be a lot of adjusting that needs to be done, not only for department heads, but for other positions too, because they looked at all classifications, it's my understanding, when they did this study. So there's still an opportunity to make sure that Zach and every other person gets right-sized salary-wise when this Gallagher study comes back. I understand what Phil was trying to do because of the timing, and, and we don't want to lose Zach, but I guess the flip side of that for me is I don't want to hold him back if he has the opportunity to become a city administrator in a community relatively close by, because that opportunity for him might not come up again in the near future. So I guess that's all I have to say. So, sure.
I appreciate that. And I don't want to say very much. I don't think it's appropriate to say very much. I want to just say about two or three things. The first thing I want to say is that the last couple of days have probably been in the top 10 or so of the worst days I've had, and that's, that's just what it is. I appreciate that this has been frustrating for people. I didn't intend to make anybody upset. I had to, you know, do what was the most I could do, do the right things for the people I care about in my position. I am set to interview for the city administrator position in Fairfield on Friday. And what I said to Phil in the first place was that preparing for that interview has really reinforced the feeling, discussing in the semifinal interview, for example, that made me reflect a lot on the accomplishments we've had in this community in the last few years. Tremendously proud of them, and there's a lot of things that are still open that I would be excited to get to finish. And so, you know, as far as being held back by anybody, I just respect, you know, let, let me make that decision. The decision that I've made is that for something that, you know, isn't going to be disadvantageous to my, myself salary-wise, retirement-wise, that the salary adjustment was agreed to, I'd be happy to stay in Atumwa, and I think that it would be, it'd be the right, it'd be the best thing. But without that, I, it just, it wouldn't make sense to stay. The second thing that I want to say is, is just that the assistant city administrator duties was part of the negotiation. I'm not, you know, if, if that's something that needs to be separated and explored further, I'm not going to die on that hill. I'll accept just the salary adjustment, and I, at the end of this meeting, would send an email to Fairfield and respectfully withdraw. So if that's the direction you want to go, that's understandable. But I do want to just say why it's there. That type of work is of extreme interest, interest to me. That's the direction I want to go someday in my career, and ideally, I'd like to do it here. I think there's a lot that I can learn about that position here. And really, what it was, was opportunities for a little bit of training, some opportunities for some mentorship and some things like that. I think the presentation maybe ballooned bigger, but, you know, that was really what was asked for, and I hope that when you do consider what you might do with that, that you'd, you'd consider those, those aspirations, because it was definitely part of, like Phil said, it kind of put it over the top. So that's all I have to say. I really appreciate your consideration, and I appreciate the energy that everybody's had to put into what they've done today. So, thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
Good evening, council. Took the wife out to eat for her birthday in Des Moines, and I was listening on the way back, so got to, I apologize for my appearance. I just wanted to make a quick stop and let you know that it hasn't been a bash of Zach, but I wanted you to know that what I thought of his character, you know, you're, you're going to be losing somebody that really takes care of their employees, solves problems, like I've never seen anybody solve problems before. And you really need to think about, and I agree with everyone else, all your employees are important, but remember, I'm the senior employee on the second floor, and I've been here for seven years. So that's, that's a young department. And to lose somebody like Zach with that young of a department, you're going to be losing a big hole. And just let you know that it'd be important to keep Zach, I think, so.
Thank you, Jake. One last chance. Any other comments?
Well, I don't have comments, but I did ask for an amended recommendation, so I wanted, there wasn't a second on that, so I just wanted to put that back in our memory.
Do you want to repeat it?
Yeah. Let me get back to my notes. I apologize. So I was amending the recommendation to approve the salary adjustment, but take, so approve the salary adjustment to the director of community development. So essentially taking out the assignment with, of the assistant city administrator duties.
Is there a second to that amended motion?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Everybody knows what they're voting on, correct? I'll make sure.
She just said it.
Okay. Councilmember Pope?
No.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Motion carries, 3-2.
I will, I just do really want to say one thing. I really want to say that.
Hold on, hold on, I want to call to question on this, because all we did was vote on an amendment. We didn't actually vote on the issue. Is that correct?
Oh, okay, that is correct.
Okay.
So now do you guys want to vote on the amended item?
I thought that's what we just did.
No, they voted to amend the item.
Okay.
To separate the two, or to, to take the one off.
Oh, so does somebody want to make another motion then?
Well, the, the, the motion is on the table for the amended motion, much like we did with the consent agenda. We've, we've already made the amendment. Now we need to vote on the amended item.
Amended item.
Which, if my, my understanding of what everybody just voted on was the salary increase less the position title of assistant city administrator. That's what was just passed.
Correct.
So now we're voting on that amended.
We need another motion.
Still need a motion and a second to vote on the item itself.
Okay, well, then I'll make that motion.
Okay. Okay. Is everybody ready to vote now?
You want to say it again before they vote?
So it is, here, I gotta find it in my, in my stuff here. I have it right here. It's just this. Here. So approve the salary adjustment for the director of community development. Do you want to leave it effective May 7, 2023?
That was her motion.
Oh, I didn't put a date on it. I just said.
There probably needs to be a date.
Okay, so approve the salary adjustment to the director of community development effective May 7, 2023, is our amended motion. Okay, so Rowe.
Take the Rowe, the Rowe call now.
Rowe first and Galloway second. Okay, is everybody ready to vote? Councilmember Pope?
No.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Motion carries, 3-2.
Okay, now, can I make a comment real quick? On the Gallagher study, I really hope that we get that back soon, and with at least the salary part of it. I told Phil I really hope that we get that Gallagher study back soon. We need it.
Me too.
In the meantime, you're going to have a lot of city officials unhappy.
We still have business going.
Yeah, we still have to do resolutions.
Can I go?
Yes.
Resolution number 75, 2023, resolution of support for a workforce housing tax credit program application by Bush Real Estate Development LLC for an adaptive reuse and historic preservation project at 107 East Second Street. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 75, 2023.
Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation is presented.
Okay, Zach, I believe you're going to present on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This resolution is just a resolution of support for the workforce housing tax credit application, and it does establish that there would be incentives that this project qualifies for if it gets to a later stage. This doesn't provide any incentives for the project, but it does provide a statement of support. It has a letter that the mayor would sign as well to support the project. And then it also states that there are some incentives that would qualify, but we'd have to do a full development agreement and a, and a look at what we would want to do as far as what the actual incentives would be. The project is a conversion of the Hotel Atumwa into 68 market unit, or market rate housing units. Would also have some refurbishment of the commercial spaces on the first and second floor. It would be a historic rehabilitation, and they're pursuing the historic tax credits alongside the workforce housing tax credit. The tax credit would have a benefit of up to $1 million towards the project.
Does council have any questions for Zach?
Yeah, so I do have a question, and I know you just stated this, but I would like further clarification.
Yep.
So while this is not approving a TIF rebate, it is saying that there could be potential incentives for TIFT in this, TIFT in this area. So my question is, like, so if we all agree to this today, what is our, I guess, what's the liability that we have, like?
None.
Thank you. You understood what I'm saying. Appreciate that.
My understanding from talking to Zach earlier is if the owner gives the historic tax credits, and there has to be a development agreement developed that would really nail down the cost and the liability to the city, but that's down the road a ways yet.
Perfect, thank you. I just wanted to, I sought that clarification, because when you do read the agenda, there is some confusion. It does, I don't know, it could allow for, oh, we're approving a TIP at this point, but we are not.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we vote? Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Resolution number 76, 2023, approving and providing consent to assignment of the lease agreement concerning lots 7, 8, and 10 in Caldwell Park addition to the city of Atumwa, Waplo County, Iowa, commonly known as 1520 West Main and 1512 West Main. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 76, 2023.
Move the recommendation is presented.
Second.
Hey, Zach, I believe you're going to present on this as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. These three parcels were leased to James and Deondra Olson in 1997, with that lease to expire in 2047. Lots 7 and 8, if you look at the map, those are the lots to the west. Those two lots are part of a, are a part of a FEMA flood relief program, where after some flooding, those lots were cleaned up at FEMA's expense with a guarantee that the city would own them and allow no development. Lot 10, it's not clear whether it's in that program, but the lease doesn't allow for any development beyond what's there now, which is that driveway. And this resolution came about because the owner of the property did pass, and the original interest in the lease was inherited by Aubrey Olson. Aubrey Olson is the executor of the state, wishes to assign that interest to Joshua and Hannah Stedman. The city is not really in a position to withhold that assignment for any unreasonable reason, and there's not anything about the assignment that would create an adverse event for the city. The development will look as it does now, and any other change would be, you know, a subject to a revision of the lease.
Council have any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Resolution number 77, 2023, addressing an irrevocable letter of direction and authorizing the mayor to sign on the Green Street Sewer Improvements Project Group A. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 77, 2023.
Move the recommendation is presented.
Second.
Okay, Larry, I believe you're going to handle this one.
Thanks, Mayor. On April 4, 2023, we awarded a contract to JK Contracting LLC of Urbantown, Iowa. Since that time, we've had a request from them to submit this irrevocable letter of, of direction to North American Construction Services Inc. of Golden Valley, Minnesota, just requesting the assignment of contract funds due J&amp;K Contracting LLC for work to be completed on Green Street Sewer Separation Project Group A. All payments will be submitted to them.
Council have any questions for Larry? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Resolution number 79, 2023, joining the Southeast Iowa Sports Commission Destination Iowa Grant Application and award as co-applicant and sub-recipient. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 79, 2023.
Move the recommendation is presented.
Second.
Okay, Zach, you're up again.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. The Southeast Iowa Sports Plex was awarded a $2.5 million grant as part of the
awarded a $2.5 million grant as part of the Destination Iowa program. Because the project is on city property and it also involves an investment from the city, IEDA has requested that the city would join the project as a co-applicant and sub-recipient. It would not change our level of investment. The council's approved $750,000, which includes some in-kind work. This doesn't increase any of that. It would just be joining on as officially a partner in some of the documentation and reporting and things like that for the grant.
Council, have any questions for Zach? Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
This is the point in our city council meeting where I ask if there's anybody in the audience that has any agenda items, non-agenda items that they would like to bring up tonight that are not on our agenda. Okay. I've got a few announcements that I want to make, and you're going to hear a lot more about this in the future, but we've got a lot of upcoming events, some really good summer events that are coming up, and I just want to kind of let people be aware of those. This coming Friday, May 5, Lulac is sponsoring a Cinco de Mayo celebration at Sycamore Park from 4 to 7. And there's going to be food and music, and the public is invited to attend that. We also are going to be having our Third Annual Atumwa Pride Celebration on Saturday, June 3. They've moved it up to June this year. And I believe it's going to be from 1 to 10 p.m. It'll be in Central Park again, and they're going to continue with their emphasis on having this be a family-friendly event. We're working on the final plans for the Juneteenth celebration, which will be in Central Park. On June 19, Monday, June 19, it's going to be from 12 to 7. And there's going to be a lot of music and a lot of kids' activities. There's going to be a lot of good food, and the library is going to be involved in helping with having some display of literary information on Juneteenth and some kids' games. They've got a whole afternoon of fun activities planned here. Again, it's going to be a family-oriented event, and we really want everybody to try and come out for that. And then the annual international festival is going to be Saturday, September 11, September 16, at Quincy Place Mall, and it's going to be from 11 to 7. And that's always a very high-attended event with a lot of good food and music and other things going on there. So I just wanted to kind of make people aware. We've got a lot of fun things happening in Atumwa this summer, so you're going to be hearing more about those events. But I did want to specifically make sure that people knew about the Cinco de Mayo event in Sycamore Park this coming Friday, May 5. Does council have any other announcements that they want to make?
Also, May 13 is upstairs downtown. That's from 10 to 2 p.m. You can get, it's a Saturday. You can get your tickets on the Main Street Facebook page. And I do have a few other comments. Just again, I think tonight there were some very common themes. First, I think one of our biggest themes, Mr. Will Hoyt pointed it out multiple times, but succession planning. I think the city in general needs to get better at succession planning. I mean, we need to have succession, succession planning. And I've talked with you today, Phil, about that more. And I think that's something that we're really lacking, and we need to get better. And we owe it to not only our employees, but our citizens to have that. The other thing too is, again, this Gallagher study, and I'm going to stress again that I would like it on the agenda, and I will ask for it to be on the agenda every time, asking for an update until it is back. That's what I have right now. There's some other thoughts of brewing, but I've not collected enough to talk about them at this point.
Does other council members have announcements they'd like to make? Councilman Rowe?
Yeah, so I, you know, mine's probably not as fun as everybody else's, but this Saturday, one of the key missions of Greater Atumwa Partners in Progress is legislative advocacy. As such, we are partnering with the League of Women Voters, and we will be having a legislative forum at the Atumwa Community School District Board Room Meeting Room at 331 East Main Street in Atumwa. And I would like to publicly thank the Atumwa Community School District for allowing the two organizations to hold the event there. What's special about this forum is it's going to be unlike any of the forums that have been done in the past, in so much as in an effort to make sure that there, that we are meeting people where they are at. And number two, that we're trying to more, moreover, involve students in the process of communicating with our legislators. This will be a live-streamed event, so that will be a Facebook live-stream event that will be available on the Greater Atumwa Partners in Progress Facebook page. There will be an opportunity for the general public who's viewing that to interact with the legislators, and they can field some questions through that process. But anyway, I, I'm excited for this. I think that it's going to be a good opportunity for the, the legislators that'll be in attendance at the event as well as the general public. And that will be at 9:30 a.m. to 11 a.m. Again, that's the Atumwa Community School District Board Meeting Room at 331 East Main Street. And I would encourage people to attend either in person or make sure you log on to the GoPip Facebook page to take part in the live stream.
What time is that again?
9:30 a.m.
I guess I have one point of clarification I'll ask you, because I know you've helped put that together. I know the focus is going to be economic development, but will there be an opportunity at some point for people to ask the legislators who are in attendance other questions that they have on their mind? Or is it just only going to be economic development, things that they can ask?
So we are structuring with the legislative events that, that Greater Atumwa Partners in Progress is working with in conjunction with League of Women Voters. Those will be specific items, and we will ask people to field their questions specifically to the issues that that particular event will, will have. So this one will be economic development. The one, the next one we have will be a different subject. And that traditionally, with the League of Women Voters events, at least in the past, has been the, the mantra of those events was they always kept the, the questions specific to the topic that was being presented at that forum.
But if you want to pull somebody to the side, I'm thinking you can do that, Mayor.
Well, and I'm, I'm not saying this to be argumentative, but I've went to a lot of those community forums that they've had at Bridgeview in years past that the Women League of Voters hosted, and they let anybody ask any questions they wanted. They didn't necessarily have a specific theme that they could only talk about. You had to write down questions, but they could ask the legislators in attendance any question, because those were always held during the legislative session.
Right, right. And, and this one will be, again, this one will be different, both in, in format and fashion with, with the agreement that we have going, going into this between the two organizations. So that's kind of how we have chosen to, to format this. Number one, for, for timing, and number two, out of respect for the legislators that are taking part in the event.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yep.
Any other announcements by any other council members that they'd like to make before we adjourn? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our city council meeting.
So move.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and I'd like to thank everybody for coming to our Atumwa City Council meeting tonight, and safe travels back home.